This how the table is?
It's ready.
Kent, are y'all about ready?
Oh, yes.
Staff, ready? Okay, we'll light the candle. Call to order of the Curville City Council Workshop for July 9, 2024. Do we have any public speakers?
No, sir.
We're gonna start off with Item 2A, Kerr Economic Development Corporation. Ma'am?
Good afternoon, Mayor Herring and members of the council. I am excited to share this quarterly update with you this afternoon. It is fairly robust and some of the information may be redundant, so I'll move quickly. And we are happy to provide you with a copy of this PowerPoint if you'd like to spend more time with the information. Okay. So on the slide here, you can see our BRE, Business Retention and Expansion Engagement, for our first quarter of our fiscal year. So this shows November, December, and January. And you can see that our annual goal was to make 22 visits to our existing businesses in Kerrville. That was our annual goal. And at the end of the first quarter, we were already half of the way there. Out of those visits, nine of those folks received resources. A lot of times, it's an introduction, or it's a tool, or a PDF, or more information, or a case study. So those are some of the types of resources we've been providing. And we ended that quarter with zero active projects. And the jobs retained were around 1,100. Okay. Next slide, Quarter 2. You can see that our visits increased to 28, with our goal of being 22. 25 of those received resources, one active project, and 1,900 jobs retained. Quarter 3, we jump up to 29 visits for the year, exceeding our annual goal of 22. 33 of those folks received resources. There's a lot of folks that will reach out to us for resources that may not be existing business owners, so for example, like a startup or a new entrepreneur that's looking for more information, which would explain why you see that there's 33 folks that have received resources and only 29 BRE visits. And two active projects, 1,900 jobs retained. So this slide refers to our recruitment efforts. This is how, this is the work that we do to attract companies that may be interested in expanding or relocating to our community. So RFI is an acronym that stands for Request for Information. So during that period, we received eight RFIs. We responded to seven. There was one in there that was not a fit for our community. We carried over seven active projects from the previous quarter, from the previous fiscal year. We provided six assists or referrals. And again, these assists and referrals are other entrepreneurs or startups that are looking for more information. And if we determine that they don't meet the criteria of our community, we will hand them off to another economic development organization, or Chamber of Commerce, or State of Texas, or whatever type of resource that they need.
Can you give me an example of what technically wouldn't be a fit?
Typically, we run our projects through our KEDC board, and they'll determine whether or not it meets our Hill Country community standard. But one project, for example, was a rubber recycling factory that wanted to relocate to our community, and the KEDC board determined that it was not the right type of business to fit in our Hill Country.
Okay.
So that's an example. There was one RFI that was not submitted. Again, this is a company that reaches out to us and asks for information on our community. And we were able to say, yeah, it looks like we're probably not the right fit for you. There's a bunch of different reasons that would determine not being a right fit. In February through April, we had 19 RFIs, responded to 18 total for the year, 10 active projects, 12 assists and referrals, two RFIs were not submitted, and one project was one that we announced, MegaCrete, in February. So you can see the corresponding capital investment, jobs, and average annual wage. Quarter 3, Recruitment. This is our current period. Again, 22 RFIs received to date, 21 responded, 12 active projects, 12 assist referrals, two not submitted, and one project won. So that brings us to our current date. Now I'll share our marketing metrics report. We did roll out some new marketing campaigns at the beginning of this fiscal year. We've been seeing that Facebook has been trending up, but there was a dip during the month of May. We're not quite sure why, but we have seen some signs of recovery. However, we are seeing a stronger growth profile in our LinkedIn metrics and also our newsletters. So we have pivoted our strategy to include more content and engagement on those channels. Our newsletter metrics have an incredible click-through rate. It seems that folks are really enjoying our newsletters. We have close to 100 subscribers on our newsletters at the moment, and so we are actually doubling our newsletter engagement in order to deliver more of the content that it seems that folks are asking for. Here is a screenshot of the activities, the key performance indicators that we have been working on since January. You can see our Facebook posts, LinkedIn posts, newsletters, blogs, press releases, events, presentations. Presentations are typically to, like, the community or other entities. Podcast or radio would be interviews, either local or outside of our community. And other, those are typically conferences. You can see that we attended a ribbon-cutting ceremony. We also were quoted in the San Antonio Business Journal, which I'm excited to share with you guys. We ordered some copies. We were featured on the front page and in the centerfold. I think we're a very beautiful centerfold, by the way. But so we were very excited about that. Other conferences, like the San Antonio Manufacturers Association, and conferences in Kentucky for IEDC or TEDC, shows some of our activity. These are some activity highlights, and I'm gonna go through these slides rather quickly just because this is probably redundant for some folks in our audience. At the end of each month, we send out our newsletter that identifies our top five highlights that have happened in the previous month. So this is the newsletter that we sent out for November reflecting October. So if you recall, last October, we had our Texas Venture Call hosted at the Trailhead. We were also recognized by the IEDC and the TEDC. We completed a Request for Information on Project Fuselage. We started fine-tuning the 24-25 strategic plan, and we had an opportunity to work with the Office of the Governor in Austin to learn more about their incentives and how we can bring those incentives back to our community. December, Vine-to-Glass Educational Programming. We had an opportunity to collaborate with Shriners University. We also had another opportunity to collaborate with the Texas-Mexico office to strengthen our business and educational ties and be more strategic about how we leverage their resources and bring them to our community. We did, we planned for a presentation to the Office of the Governor. We were able to attend the Music Friendly City Designation that Kerrville was honored for, and an aviation program ribbon-cutting at Shriners University. January, we reflected on our Quarter 4 Top Employer Holiday Roundtable that was hosted in December. We did, in this month, go to the Office of the Governor and present Kerrville along with Julie Davis, the President and CEO of the Kerrville Convention and Visitors Bureau. We received some phone calls and attention for international investment interests, folks that were reaching out to us to learn more, asking for RFIs. We did do some research and development into revitalizing the virtual business incubator, and we were able to identify our business retention and expansion pivot that you saw on the previous slides that we've been rolling out for this fiscal year. In February, we had our big announcement of MegaCrete choosing Kerrville. We were all very excited to welcome them. In March, we reflected on that announcement and the media coverage that we received. We received major publications such as the San Antonio Express-News, MSN, Industry Today, Engineering News Report, Record, excuse me, helping to amplify Kerrville's message to leaders, executives, and site selectors of the companies that we are attempting to attract. We also attended the IEDC Leadership Conference in Phoenix, Arizona. The KEDC board supported the city council in legislation for support for childcare facilities for the property tax exemption. We appeared on the Bald Truth podcast and attended the Economic Summit with Salvador Garza, CEO of MegaCrete, as one of the keynote speakers. April, we began attending Toby Lee's Highway 16 Drive on Jam Broadcasting twice monthly to update the community on the projects that we are working on and help keep them in the loop to our initiatives. Attended the KMM ribbon-cutting ceremony with their new engineering facility, which was in collaboration with Shriners University. We also hosted the Quarter 1 Eco-Future Roundtable Luncheon. I think that many of you were able to attend that. We began conducting board candidate interviews, and after that process, we brought on Dr. Mindy Curran from Ingram ISD. We also had an exclusive follow-up interview with MegaCrete's CEO, and this was the follow-up interview that was featured in the San Antonio Business Express. So we actually had to cover articles in the San Antonio Business Express as a result of that media coverage. In May, we had an opportunity to attend the Texas Venture Gala and Forum. That is the head organization that leads the Texas Venture Fest. They are rebranding this year. Instead of calling it the Texas Venture Call, it will now be known as the Texas Venture Fest. That will be happening again this October, and the registration will open on our website soon, excuse me. We attended the NBIAC Conference in San Antonio. We hosted the MegaCrete Neighbors on a community forum to answer their questions about the project and provide them introductions to the leadership and get them more clarity around what will happen next on that project. We were invited to speak with the real estate leadership at Keller Williams and also at the Citizens Academy. Brings us to June. We reflected on welcoming our new Mayor Herring to Kerrville, not to Kerrville, but back to a leadership position. We also attended the San Antonio Manufacturing Association Trade Show in San Antonio, had a wonderful conference call with Mark Larson of Early Matters San Antonio. And as an interesting aside, a lot of folks have reached out to me and asked for a PDF copy of that strategic plan. So my offer still stands. If anybody wants to take a closer look at that, please reach out to me and I'll send it to you. Continue to make guest appearances on Toby Lee's Highway 16 Drive, letting the community know what we're actively working on in KEDC and inviting community members to come in and see us so that we can help them with any business retention and expansion challenges or goals that they have. And we also had an opportunity to collaborate with some other agencies across the community on a downtown women-owned business walking tour. An update on the childcare. We have been, continue to work closely with Jeremiah Romack and the Crox Center on their community assessment and their new strategic plan. As you can imagine, they're working with a lot of different experts, and it takes some time to roll out those strategic initiatives. But we are moving in that direction, and they are tentatively saying that they're aiming to start a capital campaign to build a new Boys and Girls Club that may be able to accommodate an increase in their capacity of childcare by 100%.
Where are they at right now?
Currently, they're around 150, and so we believe their goal is gonna be around 300 to 350 children. We also, there's a local entity that has come to us and brought a building to our attention that we believe may be a perfect facility to be repurposed for childcare. So we have had some conversations with some key stakeholders that we believe may be able to help bring this idea to fruition. That is still ongoing, and as a result of that, we created this childcare survey that we have sent out to our community. Unfortunately, we've only gotten one response so far. So if you have some feedback that you'd like to share on childcare, I invite you to, please, use the QR code to contribute your thoughts to the survey. As you see in front of you, we did create the inaugural KEDC Impact Report that was just recently published, and a copy has been provided to you. For citizens who are interested in getting a digital copy themselves, they can find it online at our website at keredc.com/annualreport. And here we have an educational and marketing video.
Kerrville, Texas, a community built on family values and a strong sense of togetherness. The KEDC made sure to do their due diligence when looking for potential business for Kerrville. The focus was to make sure to align the core values of the community with the corporations they would bring. In doing so, they found the Herb and Zambrano families.
The first meeting we had was to see if we had shared values. We almost didn't even talk about business. So that, for me, was an eye-opener compared to other counties or cities that we visited. And that, for me, aside of the business, was very eye-catching for me.
And basically, if I could, you know, sum it up, it would be visit positivity and connection.
The KEDC worked tirelessly to make this collaboration between MegaCrete and Kerrville be the perfect fit for both the community and the corporation.
Hosting the team in Monterey, Mexico was amazing. When I heard for the first time from Salvador Garza, our CEO, they were coming, actually called the whole team, I was in awe, because he was the first interested party that wanted to get to know us in our environment. They wanted to see our plans, our processes, our values. They met the whole team, but not just the CEO. They met with everybody within the chain.
Kerrville really stood out as a clear choice for the first MegaCrete operation in America. They made it very easy for us to choose them.
After determining this was a good fit for all, the KEDC is proud to announce that Kerrville is the new headquarters of MegaCrete. KEDC hosted over 120 people, including the Governor's Office, local officials, and community members, to welcome MegaCrete.
Aerated autoclave concrete is produced basically like baking bread. We basically use steam to cook our mix in a very high pressure and very high temperatures. We use aluminum to create a chemical reaction that rises the material in molds, and then we bake it in autoclaves for 10, 12 hours. There's very little waste, there's very little dust, there's very little emissions. Our product is incredibly green.
This state-of-the-art facility will create over 40 primary jobs, each paying over $26 an hour, and generate an estimated 180 indirect jobs, injecting well over $58 million into the local economy. MegaCrete is more than a workplace. It's a family. We're excited to bring this spirit to Kerrville.
I believe that the values that they share are very similar to the values of why we chose Kerrville.
MegaCrete and Kerrville are building a brighter future grounded in shared values and mutual group.
And I think that was one of the things that we delivered to Kerrville that they emphasized a lot. They wanted to create a long-term project within the city and not just have an investment on the spot. They always kept talking about long-term, long-term, next generation in Kerrville. And that, for us, I think we matched super, super fast as well, because that's what we're looking for more than just the business itself.
All right, and that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Our contact information is also on the screen if you'd like to reach out privately.
Any questions for Ms. Milton Jordan?
Yes, real quick, I'm just curious. What does a visit consist of? Is it a one-on-one? Is it go to their location and have a conference about their situation and what they need?
Yeah, are you talking about the BRE visit?
Right.
Yeah, typically, it's a, there's a couple different ways that we can conduct it. Sometimes it is at their business. Sometimes it's at a local coffee shop. Sometimes it's on the phone. Business owners have very demanding schedules, and so we do our best to be as flexible as possible so that we have an opportunity to connect with them. The goal of our visit is typically twofold. One, to let them know that we're here and we haven't forgotten about them. So sometimes it's just a hi, how you doing, everything good? Yep, okay, we're still here. You know, you know our number, right? But other times, it's, if a business owner has a specific project that they need business advice or counsel on, they'll say, hey, I'm thinking about doing this. Who do I need to talk to? Or what resources are you aware of? So it can be a variety of different ways that we approach that.
Did I keep track enough to know, was it two that you were following up, or there's more than that that I missed?
The BRE visits, so far for this year, we've had 28 BRE visits.
But as out of those 28 production, I mean, something that came from those, I thought I remember there was one that needed something that you were going to fulfill, and was there one or two? In other words, how many of those 28 are gonna go forward towards something with y'all, with your help?
We do not have any active BRE projects at the moment, so the Kerrville business owners are content with their growth and their strategies where they're at at the moment. We're always looking out for new, new creative ways to do that and happy to support those business owners when they're ready.
Okay, that's great. One other thing, the downtown collaboration that you did, I would really be curious to get ahold of that particular part of your presentation today, or what your history that you had, since I'm trying to keep track of the health and well-being of downtown. If you can share anything with me about that, that would be great.
Yeah, yeah. Would you like me to share now, or should I connect with you offline?
It depends on how long it takes.
Oh, well, I can share anecdotally that it was a collaboration between the Women's Chamber of Commerce, the downtown, I'm forgetting their official name.
Main Street?
Yeah, the Main Street Board, as well as the Visitor and Convention Bureau. So we worked together to create this idea and extended it to the Main Street Board, and it appears that they already have something like that in the works. And so they said, no, thank you, not at this time. So we've also shared it with the Kerrville Chamber of Commerce, the Women's Chamber of Commerce, in an effort to support anyone else who might be interested in bringing this idea to fruition, but it seems that the Main Street Board has some other plans in place at the moment.
Okay. What was the, what was the plan, though, that?
The idea.
The idea of, yeah.
We actually had a representative from the Main Street Board relay that information to us, and so she didn't give us a lot of context.
Okay, I'll follow up on it on another way. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions?
Do you decide to call, I mean, how do you pick businesses you're contacting?
We maintain an internal list that contains a lot of downtown Main Street businesses, as well as our top employers.
So is there some sort of cutoff? I mean, for example, what the chamber is, how many members now? Are you, do you use a chamber list, or do you use? See, if you go for 20 businesses in a year, doesn't seem like all that many. You got a whole lot more, so.
Yeah, it can be, it can be challenging to give our community the coverage that it deserves with two staff members.
It's a lot of work.
Any other questions for Ms. Milton Jordan? I joined the board in May after the election and have, have seen firsthand that they stay very busy. All right, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 2B, Heart of the Hills Heritage Center update, Mr. Hornis.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you so much for taking the time this afternoon. Don't have too much on HHHC, just kind of a quick update. It's been a while since we've come and talked to you about it.
In fact, this is probably the first update for two new members, correct?
This would be a first update for two new members, so we can...
Correct. So go in as much detail as you need.
Okay. So this has been an ongoing project for several years. The city received the property from an anonymous donor. And as a part of the 2050 plan, we've got a, part of that downtown focus was creating a living room experience and fostering a downtown that helps tell the story. And so that started the conversation of creating historic Heart of the Hills Heritage Center at the AC Shriners House. And so thus began this process, and we were kind of starting this as I got going here. And this began with an initial budget that was about $3.25 million, $4 million in total. And so once we kind of started working through that iteration, we found out that we were just a little bit shy on that dollar amount. A lot of things had happened, inflation being one of them. But there was a lot to do in that, in that house. And, and so that budget was about $5.3 million. And so you'll see here that the EIC was asked to help supplement that budget with a $2 million addition. And we're in the midst of that process, as you all heard the last time that we were here. We were talking about an ask to start that process with the EIC. The actual construction cost budget says $3.6 million there. It's got a line through it. It says 5.304. We actually have $4 million associated with the city's portion of that funding, but what we did was we retained $350,000 of that outside of the budget for Marksmen as our owner's contingency. That's, so that's the funds for us to use if and when something comes up. We have a capital reserve of $400,000, and the HHHC board, who's executive director and board member, are here in the audience today. They have a million-dollar budget for their startup, for their display, their artifacts, et cetera. And so we're in the second phase of our design. We started with the first phase of the design. We went through some iterations where we were trying to figure out how much of the space we could use, what were the limitations? There were a few. So the first story of the house has more of a full use. Then you get to the second story, because it was a home before it's gonna turn into a commercial structure. It has some limitations to how many people can be up there and/or what size those exhibits can be. It's really kind of a structural component more than anything. So one piece of this, which is interesting, is as we get into the construction phase of this, we're actually gonna go in there and hand dig piers underneath the house. So it's a pier and beam house, for the most part, and so we're gonna get under there, and I say "we." I don't know that I'm actually gonna be getting...
Got your gloves ready?
They don't want me under there, although I'll happily go do it, to go dig some, some structure piers underneath it as a part of the process. The Heart of the Hills Heritage Center, along with their executive director, Angela Kennedy, has hired Quattrofoil Design Team to help them with their exhibit design. And so staff and our design builder met with HHHC and Quattrofoil at the end of last month. And so now we're kind of doing sort of competing design milestones. And so it's sort of funny, like, who can get to 100 quicker? We have asked Quattrofoil to kind of work as fast as they can, but obviously, they have to do their due diligence for their client's sake. And so as Quattrofoil sort of finalizes their exhibit recommendations to HHHC, our builder will then incorporate those into their final construction documents. One of the things that, talking about earlier, is, you know, we were over budget kind of to begin with. And so as we look at how we can fit in all those design criteria, obviously, our budget's gonna be something that we have to evaluate. But I think, you know, we're all looking good. I think everybody was happy with the way that we were having our discussions with the two design teams, which is always scary to me, because that just seems like it's expensive. But that's just me. I think it was a really good conversation, and I think we're making really good strides. So we're not off-budget at this point. We're not over our schedule at this point. It's still projected for December of next year. My hope is that we can accelerate that, but they've set a December of '25 deadline, and I'd be reluctant to say that'd be faster at this point. But essentially, that's where we are. It'd been a while since we talked about it, and so I just wanted to bring, bring that up. We'll have more to come, I think, in the next two months. We should have a GMP conversation, which is a guaranteed maximum price. We are, we do acronym soup when we do design-build. And so if you hear me saying an acronym that you don't understand, hit me with something, and then we'll explain it. So much more to come, but we are working our way through that. The next steps we have is, EIC has heard the ask. They will hold a public hearing next month, or not next month, next Monday. And then, provided they say yes to that, which should go, then council will ratify EIC's agreement, as they do with all agreements. Once that's complete, the design is finalized, then Marksmen will come back to us with a guaranteed maximum price, which we'll bring back to y'all. One of the portions of this process that we started early on is working with Fries &amp; Nichols as our design-build advisor. They helped us kind of get started with this process. They've provided us a scope and fee to kind of go through the end of that duration, all the way through construction. So they're helping, they're currently actually helping us out with the public safety facility as well. And so what that entails as a design-build advisor is they're reviewing every contractor, every subcontractor, all the submissions, checking all the prices, reviewing all that for the public safety facility. checking all the prices, reviewing all that for the public safety facility. That is, I don't know, a thousand submissions that Kyle, who is over there, Burr, our engineering director, and Joel have been working through. So we have a scope from them. We're continuing to talk to them about the possibility of, of them coming on. Uh, as you might imagine, with all of the projects that we have going on right now, uh, engineering department is stretched kind of thin. And so, uh, so that's, those are our next steps. As far as HHHC is concerned, and that's all I have for that one. So I'll turn it over for any questions you all might have.
Any questions? Go ahead, please.
No, I'm just, I always drive by and look to see, what, is anything going on? Is there any sweeping going on or any, you know, landscaping? Anything? Tree trimming?
So landscaping is actually one of the pieces that we had to cut out of it in terms of like really doing a whole manicured, uh, portion of it. So I think that's sort of a phase two fundraising effort that I think HHHC is going to try and tackle, uh, once we get past the first phase of it. I will say that, you know, the contractors and, uh, and, you know, not the contractors, there was a concern about a very large tree that's right next to the, to the building. And we had a, a forester take a look at it because it's going to be complicated to work around it because it's right next to where the sunroom is. But it's also such a beautiful big tree. And the forester said, you know, that's just, that, that's a challenge because it's in an urban environment and surrounded by concrete. That tree is doing okay. And so, you know, they said, no, keep that thing around. It's going to provide shade for, for the building. And so anyway, it's a beautiful space and, and it's got a lot of opportunity to it. So we're excited about continuing to move forward.
I did see Greg Nichols at HEB. Don't you see everybody at HEB? And we talked and he was talking to me about some other things, but he mentioned, he said, or the people at the foundation are anxious to see something happen. It's going to happen. We were talking about all the other things that are, you know, planned. And I said, this one will happen, not to worry. He said, good, I'll tell the folks, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Hornis?
Are we still going to have a spot over there, um, for one of those Brinkman statues that were donated to us? We still sending one over there?
Yes, ma'am. That's, uh, I think, I think, thanks for the rain. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
And note in the audience, we have the executive director of Heart of the Hills Heritage Center, Angela Kennedy, and the board secretary Linda Stone. Do you, either, you want to make a comment? Yes, please.
Good afternoon. Angela Kennedy, executive director of Heart of the Hills Heritage Center. Um, this is actually a really exciting week right now for the Heritage Center and for the city. We are working as a board and, and myself as the only staff member to review and ultimately approve the concept design that Quattrofoil, our exhibit design firm, has presented to us. We have a small exhibit design team that has been working, they're part of our board, with Quattrofoil to come together, understand what is it, the story that we want to tell? How do we want to engage our audience and how do we do it in a space that has certain limitations? As Michael mentioned, because the house was built in 1909, it's always been a private residence. You can imagine there are some limitations that the house presents. We hired Quattrofoil as our exhibit design firm because they are well-versed in working in buildings that are historic, buildings that have limitations and working to really enhance the experience for community to engage with each other with exhibits, but also, um, help us to develop programming that connects with our community. So currently we are reviewing this concept plan for our exhibits. Literally was reviewing all of the feedback from our 11 board members before I came to this meeting. And we are meeting on Thursday to start that process of discussing what are some suggestions that we have to move this forward? And, and what other ideas do we have to ensure this is going to be a interactive, engaging, and just welcoming place for our community? And the city has been a wonderful partner in working with us and we appreciate the council's support as well as EIC's support so that we can push this project forward.
Any questions for Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, the city is working on construction of the building as the owner of the building. And the museum board is working on, uh, designing the inside of the displays and,
Correct.
the interactive part of the building. And the museum board is paying for that part and the city is paying for their part. So there, there are two design teams working in tandem, trying to get us to the finish line. And in full disclosure, I have an interest in the project.
We are meeting tomorrow about it.
I keep an eye on, I keep.
Thank you. Are you on that board too?
I am indeed.
All right, Mr. Hornis, public safety facility update. I think you have some exciting news for us.
I do, I do. Uh, so if anybody has driven around town, the public safety site does not longer, no longer looks like this. So this is an aerial shot I thought was really great, uh, because it showed the first, uh, two pores. And really, um, there's three sections. And it's, uh, the court, which is the closer to Rio Monte there. Uh, that's kind of section one is how we're describing it. And then section two is IT and fire administration, um, and, um, some of the police, which is that section that's already poured over towards the apartment complex. And then section three, that's, uh, that's the remainder of the police department area right there. And this was taken, obviously, before that pour was done, but that is now complete. And, um, where are we in the process? We are kind of in that line between design and construction. So we still have design meetings going on. We're finalizing fixtures, furniture and equipment still, uh, for some of it. And we are doing, we took a look at the landscaping plan, talked with the staff, who's going to be maintaining it from our Parks Department. There was a lot of rock in there. It was very much a low-impact design, which is what we want. But at the same token, we want something that is maintainable, uh, with the staff levels that we have. So we, we have asked them to kind of revise that to have a mixture of both, so that we can come in, we can maintain it, and it also hits that low-impact design. So we're finalizing those this week. Actually, we should have some, some of our last FFNE meetings, what should we call them? And landscaping meetings later on this week as well. Concrete pores of the foundation are complete and underground utilities within the building are complete. There's still going to be some stuff out in the parking lot, uh, to be done. And tilt wall panels are going up now and the building is starting to take shape. So if you haven't had a chance to go out there and take a look at it, you will have seen, uh, a lot of these folks out there and you will have seen this part of this right here. So this is the safety meeting. Now, one thing I just want to quickly say is that the group that you all have selected to build this building, uh, is nothing if not safe. They're, they're efficient at what they do, but they are very safe. Uh, their, their superintendent out there is, uh, it's top of his mind every time. So this is all of them meeting, everybody on the job site, and they're doing a safety briefing on what's going to happen while the crane is out there for the next several weeks, where to be, where not to be, what to do. And that is not a stock photo. That is your public safety facility and, um, the walls are being erected. And it's hard to, it's, it's hard to imagine that we're already here. And it's really exciting. I think there's smiles on the faces of both the chiefs, I know Charby as well. And, uh, and if Yesseni was here, I know it would be her too. So this is going to be, this is a good, good, good thing and we're all excited. This was my very terrible photo that I took when I was leaving the site after that safety meeting. The schedule is going well. We're still moving forward according to schedule. Uh, I did say I wouldn't mind us being slightly behind schedule, uh, if that meant that we had more rain days. So they have a lot of rain days within their schedule. They're not, we're not exceeding those at this point. But again, I'd happily take us being a week or two behind if that meant we got a extra couple of days of rain. So, uh, I don't have much more than that. I think that right there speaks for itself. Staff is working really hard. Uh, Kyle and his team have been putting in a lot of hours on this project, reviewing all the subcontractors, making sure the pricing is good. Make sure, making sure they're quality folks that are going out there. We've had very, very few complaints. We had some folks who were having issues that the trucks during the Fourth of July weekend were kind of taking a cut through maybe to get to Singing Wind, you know, when the cat's away. I think some of that was, was happening. But the, we, we let the team know. They shut that down immediately. So they're very responsive to, um, the concerns that they get from us and from the community. With that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions for Mr. Hornis?
How tall are these tilt-up panels?
Chief, what did you say? Taller than you expected?
Is it like 20?
So court, so court is, court is actually probably one of the taller sections of the space. I think you're looking at about 25, 30 feet right there. Uh, but again, that is the court side, which is, is, is a taller portion of the space. You'll see that there and then also at, um, the large evidence space is also going to be tall because they're, they're going to have a lot of stuff to pack in there. And so we wanted there to be enough space going vertical because you can't go out.
Right.
Other questions? I encourage people to drive by. It's kind of exciting to see it going up.
Do you drive by often?
Every day, like a stalker.
I'm sure they recognize your car by now.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, and, and, um, we don't have a date yet. But in the same way that we did kind of a groundbreaking, uh, we'll also do a day for, uh, beam signing. So have folks come out, council, staff, and the bond committee, same group that was invited last time in the community as well, to, you know, sign a beam before it goes up and names will be in there forever. So more to come on that.
Thank you.
Item 2D, uh, Ms. Behrens. It says.
Be a little scary if I'm signing off on budget.
I'm sorry, it just has your name as, as the contact. Who will be speaking to us?
I will be. Cameron Bowsky.
Cameron Bowsky with Matrix Design Group is here. I just want to give you a quick overview before I turn it over to him, especially for the newcomers on council. Last year about this time, we were going through the procurement process. Matrix was the group that we elected to facilitate this, uh, this project. What we're looking at is a, a lot of issues, CaliTheater, uh, being a prime example of one, where deferred or no maintenance has been an issue in a lot of our facilities. So we wanted to, uh, work off the 2008 facilities master plan that was done, not doing the needs assessment aspect of it. Let's just, you know, as far as personnel, we're looking at the space of the condition, uh, or the condition of each facility inside and out. So what, what his team did, he'll elaborate a little bit more. What his team did is, you know, they come in to City Hall, uh, looking at every HVAC unit that we have, you know, looking to see if there's any roof leaks. All, all the issues that we continually have that seemingly, you know, go untouched until they're a problem. And so what we did is, uh, we wanted to develop a 10-year plan with that for preventative maintenance, for, you know, big-ticket items, like, like I said, like the CaliTheater roof and HVAC. What else is out there so that, uh, and that's, as Julie's name was on this one that you referred to, Mayor? The reason we're, we're doing this is how can she brings a budget to you where we can get some of this stuff done? What do we need to start, you know, contracting out for preventative maintenance? What do we need to start doing in-house? So we got about 20 facilities that we, we did. We did not include the, the cabins and whatnot at KSP. We did the Parks Admin Office. We did the, um, KSP Office, but we did not do the, the cabins or anything on the hillside, uh, the rec hall, anything like that. So, uh, I think you may have a, a list of what we've got. But ADA compliance is another one that we always want to look at. So we're just looking to see what, what's out of code, i- if any, hopefully, you know, very minimal. He'll give you the results of that. So, uh, just wanted to give you a brief overview of where we, uh, where we are and where we're going. Plan on, on getting this based off of your input, having some dialogue with finance and what we can and can't afford, uh, you know, moving forward for budget purposes, building CIP projects and, and then getting the final draft, uh, report in front of you or, or admin, uh, for budget. That, that way we can start October 1st, getting some of these things knocked out. So with that, I'll turn it over to Cameron.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Bowsky, thank you.
Thank you for having me. So I, uh, I briefed a lot of city councils. I really love the energy of, of this council. I've seen some that are like infighting and whatnot. So this is really great.
We could have a good eye.
Say, what?
We're still.
No, 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 that's all right, that's all right. So I hope to keep the energy up. Um, I walked in with Chief Maloney and he informed me that these usually go about an hour, which means I have 15 minutes. So, uh, out of respect for your time, I knew I could make for a long evening with this, followed up by another city council meeting. Uh, so I may, uh, speak a little quickly. I, I did notice that, uh, our city manager, Mr. Rice, also proudly shaves his head bald. So I'm glad to be in, in good company here. And, uh, so I'm a licensed engineer, so big shocker. I, I'm a nerd. I love the data. I had, really enjoyed getting to look at all of your facilities inside, uh, and out. However, this is the favorite part of my job because as cool as the data is, the best part is what you can do with that information, which is, uh, give it to you so you can make informed decisions on how to best take care of, of the city.
I interrupt you to say you have a little bit more time than 15 minutes, so don't, don't.
Okay, thank you so much.
You have 16 minutes.
So all, uh, all great dads, uh, you know, they give the age-old and important lessons to their kids that, you know, if you're going to, if you're going to start something, you better well plan on finishing it. Although usually there's a few extra expletives in there. In that spirit, I've had the privilege of, uh, being a part of this project since its inception. I was actually the one who wrote the proposal. That's something, rather than having one person who writes a proposal and one person who negotiates and then another person who does the work, um, we actually get to, at Matrix, we get to do from start to finish. So it's a great continuity for you and it's a great efficiency for us, which makes sure that you get the most bang for your buck. Consistent with the great comments from, from Kyle today, uh, my goal is to tell you a story. And I'll use that old military acronym bluff, bottom line up front, prior Air Force civil engineer. The story is that your requirements are great, no surprise there, and they outpace, uh, your budget to support them. Also, this is true across the nation. This is without exception. Uh, but that's the story. This is not a decision brief. Uh, however, this is an informative and an advocacy brief to help tell you precisely what that need is. What I usually find, um, for, for councils, for whether it's at a state, county or city level, is that, um, particularly when you're starting this process, is that the need has always been great. But coming forward to be able to tell you and articulate precisely what that need is and put a number beside it, and to be able to defend and articulate that well, that's the challenge. And that's what this process gets you, uh, and you'll be able to see more of that. I'll summarize and provide that 30,000-foot view, uh, and then we'll get a little bit into the weeds. But a lot of the details you'll be able to get from, from Julie as we kind of iterate through the budgeting process. So, uh, because this is the first time I've had an opportunity of briefing this council on this topic, we're going to go through, uh, the whole gamut. I want to make sure that you have sufficient context of where we've been, kind of where we're at and where we're going, so I can kind of paint this canvas. So that way, when we actually get to some of the important details, they, they fall into place and then make sense. All right, so where we've been. So if, uh, if you consider project execution alone, just getting the project done, you might say that we're going to have a baby. This is a nine-month process and we're, we're right at the tail end. However, if you bake in the contract acquisition, that first top left part, uh, it's really a 12-month burn from start to finish. Going into a little bit of detail what that looked like, um, you know, I showed you all the way from July, moving up to July today. The one thing I want to highlight from this slide and the one thing that Kyle's done and as well as your acquisition team has done, is it's been a very deliberate process. Every single month, uh, there's been a muscle movement from proposal to negotiation to coming in before the council. And September, contract kickoff and so on. Every single month, there's been something that has pushed this project forward. Uh, we, uh, Kyle has kept us on task to make sure that we can, I could be here today to present this information to you. So, um, in its simplest form, this was the, this was the scope of the project. This is what a facilities condition assessment inventory master plan process looks like. Uh, we looked at 19 facilities precisely. Probably the most important part, aside from actually gooding eyes on the assets themselves or talking to your, to your staff and being able to understand their mind, where their, their problem areas are, what their challenges are, what their needs and desires are. There's a lot of ground truth there and we get to marry that up with what we see, our objective third-party review, which helps build a truly comprehensive plan, uh, moving forward. The property condition reports, um, you'll see a picture of that on the right side of the slide. If you're curious and you really want some like nitty-gritty details of what's going on in one specific facility, these property condition reports are the most detailed part. If you want to actually focus on just one facility, it'll give you all the detail you need to see. Asset management piece is finally where we get to, okay, we know what you have. We have asset visibility. Now we need to articulate what you need in terms of where are your problem areas. And, uh, from a sound asset management approach, where are the problem areas that don't exist now but will exist in five to 10 years from now? So you can really, uh, budget well. And then the master planning process brings everything together from start to finish. The report that Kyle mentioned is something that, uh, you'll see in front of you in the next, uh, 30 to 45 days or so, uh, after we get some feedback from your staff. All it's going to do, uh, there will be no surprises there because. All it's going to do, there will be no surprises there because it will summarize everything that I'm talking about today. And then finally, a presentation, why I'm here. So data collection, wanted to highlight that when you're dealing with asset management platforms, for those who don't work with them day-to-day, at their most basic level, they accomplish three things. One is data collection, the second is day-to-day maintenance tracking. So technician goes out, I did maintenance on this thing, I put it in the system so we know that it happened, so it'll tell us when to do it next. And then the third piece is requirements forecasting, using some type of model to tell you, when do you need to go out next, when do you need to replace this thing? And the truth for almost all of these systems is that they rarely do all three very, very well. This one that we chose, Fulcrum, does daddy collection, it's just dedicated for that, which is why we chose it. The other thing it gets us is that it diversifies the output. So I know that you're bringing brightly asset management platform to bear for Curville so we can export and migrate all of the information we captured, so none of it is lost. So you can work with that to build the foundation, you know, moving forward. This is a major muscle movement and we don't want to lose anything. Kyle mentioned that I would have the complete facility list, so this is it, this slide and the next slide. It worked out very, very nicely, it was cut cleanly between, you know, five administrative buildings, five operations buildings, and I'll stay here for just a moment so you can take a look at that list. And then we had five arts and education facilities and then four fire stations. All right, so in terms of our assessment approach, so we looked at everything we could get eyes on. It's important to note that, you know, based on the standards that tell us how these are supposed to go, it's non, we're not doing any confined space searches, it's non-destructive, we're not breaking anything down, we're not connecting leads to anything. This is a visual assessment approach overlaid on top of the feedback that we get from your team. However, with that, you can still see quite a bit. If there's cracking in the foundation, we can see that and we can figure out what needs to happen there. The exterior includes everything from windows, doors, roofing, et cetera, interior finishes, use this as a great example, anything you can see with your eyes inside of a room, from the floor to the wall to the ceiling. HVAC is where, as Kyle mentioned, we find a lot of our requirements, particularly in cities that are either very hot or very cold because it puts a lot of strain on those systems. Electrical, typically we only have findings based on feedback from the occupants. If things start breaking and panels start popping, that's where we know we need to start spending some time. Side improvements are chiefly parking sidewalks and roadways and then ADA compliance. The way we assessed it was what you can see on the right, excellent, good, fair, poor, and then we baked that into some of the recommendations that we're going to talk about shortly. So most people are familiar with the old adage that Rome wasn't built in a day. Most people don't consider, probably because it doesn't need to be said, that it also wasn't built by one person. This process is very comprehensive, it's very similar, it's a multi-discipline process. When you build a facilities master plan, by definition, it is multi-discipline, it needs to be, otherwise you're just going to miss things. So aside from myself and my deputy project manager, Lindsay Burleson, and we also had another civil engineering task lead, we also brought Todd Keener from Keener Engineering, he's in Fredericksburg. So we had a mechanical engineering and plumbing professional, licensed professional on our team, and Scott Shellhays, who's actually a local to Curville, he was our licensed architect who was also part of our assessment team and our analysis team. So, and the last one was Moca Services. So I've been doing project development, construction, from design all the way to demolition for my entire career, including cost estimating, but that's not my specialty, I can do it. So we bring in Moca Services because that's their full-time job.
Moca?
Moca Services, it's a company. Yeah, so that's the company.
It's not an acronym?
It's not an acronym, yeah, it's just the name of the company. I don't know why they put it in all caps, that is kind of misleading. But yeah, they've got a handful of folks that we work with and partner with for years that they're certified cost estimators to make sure that when we put a number in front of you, it's from a people who, that's all they do across the country, so you can trust those numbers. All right, so that's the background, that's the context, that was a big canvas, hopefully that wasn't too quick. So where are we at now, state of the portfolio? So I'll focus on two things, you know, I talked about the excellent, good, fair, poor, the two being that there's none that are poor, there's some that are probably close, and there are none that are excellent. Everything's kind of in that middle ground, should be no surprise there. The four assets I wanted to highlight that are specifically in that lower-tier, fair, almost poor condition were the four that you see listed there. The Regional History Center, it had, you know, cracking in the masonry brick, which might denote some settling, which is a foundational problem. Some of the windows are painted shut and therefore inoperable. There's a hydraulic leak in the elevator and the first-floor HVAC is in very poor condition and probably needs to be replaced.
Excuse me, did you have a question?
Well, I was just curious, but I'd like to hear the rest of your explanation about what's wrong, but the percentage of, are they equally split in this half, this third, fourth of a pie, three-fourths of a pie?
Say that one more time.
So for instance, the Regional History Center, does it take up 50% of that blue part or 30%?
No, no, so the yellow that you're seeing there, the 21%, that's fair condition, that's commensurate with the four facilities that we're showing. That is those four facilities. Everything else is in good condition based on, because we apply a condition rating to all of the different major systems that make up a facility and those aggregate into one building condition index for the facility writ large. So the rest of the facilities that you don't see listed here are all in good condition, but still need work. So I don't want to lead you astray. The Fire Station 3, second oldest operational fire station built in 1986, broken electrical sockets, deteriorating interior paint, leaking plumbing, roof leaks, damaged windows, exteriors, and some very unique HVAC problems, which I'll talk about a little bit later.
I'm surprised you don't have the bus station listed here.
So that was not, that was not one facility that we assessed, that's probably why it's not on there.
Okay, because that would have, that would have been red.
Definitely, yeah, okay.
It's on issue at some point.
So the Vehicle Maintenance Building, there's penetration of rain into the roof despite the fact that the roof was replaced six, about five or six years ago, which is problematic. The folks who actually use this day-to-day provided some feedback that despite the four bays that are there, it already kind of, they're already working outside of their space, meaning it's still too small for their needs. The roof is too low for certain truck clearance that they need to put in there, so they have to do the maintenance outside. Of the four roll-up doors, two of them are part of the original construction, so those are going to probably create problems and fail in no time. And then as you might expect with the roof leaks, there's interior damage to some of the finishes. For the, for the Curville Shriner Park Office, wood siding is okay, there's a significant mini-finance for ADA compliance and then some minor stuff with respect to sink receptacles or, excuse me, the outlets underneath the sink that aren't GFCI, so if they're close to water, they need to be a certain type of receptacle for safety purposes. And then condenser unit one actually needs to be replaced. So the key question that's going to, you're going to gain more resolution on in the near future as the, you know, your finance team and I have an opportunity to iterate through this budgeting process is, you know, what are the comparative costs when I'm making a decision of, do I just sustain what I have, do I remodel based on all these findings or do I construct new? And across the board, and I'll have another opportunity to talk to this briefly, but for all of those facilities, you're looking at under $100,000 more or less to sustain in the near term and anywhere between $500,000 to $1.5 million to remodel, but then you're getting close to the $4 or $5 million to demolish and construct new. So that's, that's kind of the ballparks of what we're looking at. So summary of findings, just two quick highlights here. On the left, first, it was, it was nice to find and not unexpected that the requirements were fairly split in terms of things that were critical, critical being this is something you should probably get after in the next one to two years, intermediate meeting three to five, routine corrective actions and ADA. However, when you look in the graph on the right, it tells a little bit of a different story in terms of weight because in terms of actual costs, most of the requirements are in the first two categories, with just under $1.5 million for near-term critical requirements and then almost $2.5 million for intermediate requirements. So representative projects, and what I mean by that is, I just wanted to highlight a few projects that you're going to, once you actually get a chance to look at the master plan, you're going to see more projects like this. For critical repairs, I want to talk briefly to the justification behind it, the thought process behind it. So generator replacements. When you have an asset that's required for emergency services and it's reaching the end of its service life, that's the type of thing that you typically don't want to wait until it fails. If it's at the end of its manufacturer recommended service life and it's for something as critical as fire emergency services or something similar, that's probably something you want to get after sooner rather than later. And you have some of that. IT server room upgrades, communications, also something you don't want to fail to keep, make sure the city runs well. And then roofing, this is something you're going to see for multiple facilities. When you start having problems with roofing and then you finally get some of those rains that you desperately need, then it creates a lot more problems over time and it does not stop. It just gets worse and then it accelerates in terms of the degradation of the facility interior. Intermediate requirements, some ducting repair for facilities, condenser unit replacements, this is very straightforward. You can see there's a theme for, you know, HVAC requirements. Some more representative projects for routine corrective maintenance, some minor stuff, I'll highlight library lifecycle carpet replacement. These are the types of things that, you know, most of the time you just don't think about, but at some point you really would like to have it in the budget so you can plan for it six years ahead of time before it's like an immediate ask. So this is something, the type of things that we want to get into your budget ahead of time, so you can make informed decisions on competing requirements well in advance rather than waiting for something to fail because these requirements aren't going anywhere. And for those who are familiar with ADA requirements, this is typically bathrooms and entryways as well as signage and there's a handful of findings across all of the facilities. All right, the most important question, where we're going in terms of what, a little tasting of what you are going to see in the next few weeks and months in terms of asks, requests, considerations. For those who are a little bit unfamiliar with complete construction, you know, the construction part itself covers concrete, masonry, metals, woods, plastics, openings, finishes and equipment. The services are like the fire suppression, plumbing, HVAC and electrical, and then infrastructure is the earthwork, exterior improvements and utilities. So when you see a $5 million price tag, that's everything that goes into it. Based on the earlier briefs that I heard with the line going through the 3.6 million, going up to five, there shouldn't be any sticker shock with these numbers. This is, this is the construction industry and this is what we're looking at in terms of demolishing existing assets and constructing new. I will note, one of the things that's baked into these numbers, this is really important for you to know, is no one wants to invest this amount of money just to get the same capabilities that they already have. If you're going to demolish an old asset and you're going to posture yourself for future growth, you want to make sure that you're expanding services, expanding capabilities. So in every case without exception, these were built out and highlighted and these costs were built out with the consideration that they were going to expand by 20 or 25% of their footprint. Perfect example, the Vehicle Maintenance Building, not four bays but six, to keep it simple. All right, fiscal investment scenario. So I'm an engineer, I am not, I'm not Julie by any stretch of the imagination. However, partnering with, you know, your finance team, we wanted to start somewhere. The reality is, when you do this process, you already, you don't have an earmarked budget set aside to get after these requirements because there's already requirements aplenty. However, you have to start somewhere. So this is the first iteration of that, what that looks like and what I have seen elsewhere with cities of similar size is, all right, let's do 100K in the first fiscal year or 150 or 200. This one starts out at 150K. You'll see it slightly rises to account for inflation each year, changes in the construction market and a little bit of contingency. So this is just, this is one possible scenario of, if you start here, what can you get after? The reality is, if you do start there and you increase this and you get to a baseline where you want to invest 300K, this specific scenario still leaves something to the tune of $3 million of untapped requirements, meaning there are still $3 million of stuff you won't get after that we know about right now and it doesn't include any of the new construction because those big-ticket items are unique and they need to be handled as such with additional grants and bonding and, you know, what have you. So for those, I imagine most of you are very familiar with the construction acquisition process. This is just a follow-on from the last slide, just to continue to tell that consistent story in terms of advocacy for budgeting requirements and how important these are. So, you know, I know that Julie has been working this budgeting process for months already, it starts probably before January and works all the way well into the summer. The actual design process when you're seeking construction, I put five to eight months, particularly because there's also an acquisition part of the process for that. If you're curious, why in the world would it take eight months? And then contract acquisition, you know, it's got its own process. And then construction, depending on the complexity and scope, it could take anywhere from half a year to a year to a year and a half or two years. So getting ahead of this and having these types of conversations right now so we can make informed decisions is definitely the most important thing we can do to make sure we get after this and posture ourselves for the future. So I mentioned that these types of projects are treated uniquely because they're so expensive. One of the things that we like to do is identify opportunities for you because you're not going to be able to get after some of these requirements based on the budget you already have, you know that. The Texas Department of Agriculture's Community Development Block Grant Program, that's tough to say. So there's multiple opportunities there for consideration to tap into. Community Development Fund supports public works, so like waste, and this is not on the slide, this is some of the examples for that specific program. Supports wastewater, water, wastewater, streets and drainage. There's even a, this will be important for fire, there's a FAST program for this grant, it's a fire ambulance and service truck supporting eligible vehicles. And there's a rural community loan eligible for incorporated cities with 50,000 people or less, used toward community facilities and infrastructure improvements. Regarding the last one, for fire emergency vehicles, if I were sitting in your seat, the question I would have is, that has nothing to do with facilities, why are you talking about grants that have nothing to do with facilities? If we can find a way to pay for something you already have a bill for that's not facilities related, so we can take those monies and reallocate them to facilities requirements, that's also goodness there. So that's why I'm talking about some of these, some of these opportunities. EDAs, Economic Development Administration, infrastructure improvements opportunities, and then FEMA has a few other opportunities that they can get after other facilities, infrastructure requirements, specifically they do hazard mitigation, increase of capabilities as well as capacity. So last slide. All right, I'm 20 minutes in. So I'll continue to, my team continues to and will continue to partner with Julie and their finance team to iterate this process so we can give you some feasible alternatives on, you know, recommendations, hey, this is how we can get after some of these requirements. We'll have an opportunity to give you a review of the master plan. I'll continue to partner with Kyle and his team to make sure that all the data we captured is not lost and is migrated into the brightly data management system that you're bringing onboard. And then after that, it's making sure that, you know, we get after all these preventative maintenance requirements because we can put a lot of money, throw a lot of money at these facilities, but if we're not doing that preventative maintenance, then we find ourselves back here in 10 years, talking about the same thing. So with that, I'll get off the stage and dissipate your questions, really appreciate the opportunity to brief.
Any questions for Mr. Bowsky? Bowsky or Bowsky?
Bowsky, yeah, Polish, yeah.
Bowsky, Mr. Burrow or Mayor?
I just have a question as to why the bus station wasn't included in these, this asset? Because we're...
So Chief is planning on staying there another 20 years, so we didn't want to do anything with him. No, because of the new facility, we didn't look at the court building, we didn't look at the police building and a fire is in a leased space, so we didn't look at either those three because we knew there was going to be a bigger decision to be made on those facilities. I don't want to waste time or money when, you know, maybe selling...
Yeah, it just would have been interesting to know what all he found there.
That presentation would probably double.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
But one thing I did want to mention, so one of the things that he had on there was the fire station generators. We're still going to keep that as pending. If you recall, that's part of the hazard mitigation grant that we applied for in '21 and '22. We still don't have official approval on that, so we're still seeing it as a need until we get that funding allocation that says, here's your formal approval. And once we do, I'll obviously give you an update on that, but I just want to keep that in everybody's mind that we do still have that application out for a couple of years.
Anybody else, questions?
Thank you.
I need a joke or something right about now.
I'm sorry?
I need a joke or something right about now.
As you probably know, the council, this council, previous councils, always gets the question, why didn't somebody think about this 10 years ago or 20 years ago? And so our answer is, we're starting to work on that now. This is looking ahead to try to figure out what we need to allocate for future, future facilities, maintenance and...
Sustainability.
They have to sell that bus terminal to pay for some of these things.
I think that's the plan.
Yeah, and to pile on your comment, Mayor, I want to highlight that you are not in a unique situation.
I know.
This is absolutely important and I see this everywhere, so I'm glad, I'm really[1745.33]